Thank you, Mason. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our joint study session with our awesome Covington Youth Council. Today is Tuesday, March twenty eighth, and in compliance with state law, city councils' special and regular meetings are being held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we're going to call this meeting to order, and instead of roll call, we can just go around the room and introduce ourselves. We'll start with Ethan. Director?
Krista Bates, City Clerk.
Beth Porter, City Council Member.
Chucky Jadi, Youth Council Senior Advisor.
Joe Simomo, City Council.
Sean Smith on the council.
Katie Lance, Chair of Youth Council.
Jeff Wagner, your Mayor.
Debbie Hartzog, City Council.
Thank you all for being here. We have several items for discussion, but I am going to turn it over to this young lady on my right who's in charge. It's all yours.
And then we do have a few members running late. Herschelene and Michelle will be here in a few minutes, and then also I do unfortunately have to leave early. But this is some of the topics we'll be covering tonight. Just to give you an idea before we start in. Alright, we can go to the next slide. So first on our list is pedestrian safety. This has been brought to our attention because of the accidents that all happened within the span of a week with four accidents and three fatalities. So, thank you. We have some deteriorating sidewalks with the plants uprooting and causing unequal sidewalks, and then some street lamps. Limited visibility, especially around curves. So the area between two seventy second Covington Elementary on one fifty-six. I take that route every day, and it's really dangerous because, well, not really dangerous, but limited visibility because of the lack of street lamps. And with it being right next to an elementary school, I don't feel like that's very safe. And then school zones. We just recently started doing school zones right near Kentwood, when they should have been happening for a very long time before that because that's where one of the accidents did happen, not during school. But it also helps when people go slower. And then a big thing is no right turn on red. So we have two seventy second, which is like a five-line road with a turn lane included. It's just so dangerous trying to cross that because people aren't paying attention. They just want to go. And we really need to implement more no right turns on red, so we have more pedestrian safety. So those are some areas we could fix. Light more areas. Prioritize street lights and power outages like the recent one. I'll wait till they're situated.
Shell's here and Archelene is here.
Sorry for being late.
Same thing you showed up.
Alright. So in my personal experience, I live in the rural part of Covington, which is, I guess technically unincorporated King County, but still we have Covington residents over there. So we really need to prioritize street lights and power outages because it's dangerous. For instance, on one of the trails, the crossing, the light went out during the power outage, and it didn't get fixed for a very long time. So that's something. Oh, awesome. Also tying into pedestrian safety is our street cleanup, which we as a youth council do. We do it twice a year, once in November and once in April, and it really keeps our street clean and encourages our community to keep the streets clean. It's been proven somewhere somehow that if you see people actively trying to keep our streets clean, then you'll try yourself to keep it clean. It's less harmful to the wildlife, and it increases Covington's overall beauty. It's natural beauty. Any questions? Any questions on pedestrian safety? So one was right by Kentwood, one was along two seventy second, I believe, and the other two, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, the council, we'll look at these things, and obviously we're concerned about pedestrian safety. I'm interested in the school zone near be something I think we want to talk to the school district about. See if that's something we get. Institute, I know there's one down, probably down that street for Covington Elementary. But I, I'm trying to remember if even ever put one for high schools.
I know when I was at Kentwood, there was a school zone on the run there of one sixty-four. Are we talking about two fifty-six where there's not?
Yeah.
Turn your mic on. Sorry. There you go.
There is too, a small corner. Okay, Cherylene, for a little bit, there is sidewalks, but then if people want to turn left out of the road to Kent Lake, there's just really, they lose a sidewalk really quick, and that road is like a very blind turn, and people will whip like forty-five around that one.
Like right by Kent Lake on the way.
I'm incorporated King County.
Oh, but also near Kentwood, where I've walked from Kentwood to the Covington part, and it was like forty minutes, but there was. It was because of this, actually, when we were cleaning it up. But there was a long stretch where there was no sidewalk. And I feel like kids take that route every day. Yeah, that's really a big thing, so.
Mayor Wagner and Councilmember Simomo and myself were pressed with elementary last week, talking to the fourth grade class, and half the people that were there that mentioned, the children mentioned safer sidewalks, safer routes to school, and I think they, it really hit home one of the recent accidents because it was one of their classmates. But I think it was still very fresh, but it's just, it's interesting that we're seeing that ask through varying levels of interest groups throughout the city.
Alright. Next, is our clothing time. Um, so last time we had met together, we had this idea, like, of doing a clothing drive, and we wanted to do it two times a year, and Amelia had informed us that at the clothing drive where her mother works at, that usually that they don't really have clean socks and underwear, and that's something that they really need. So we were hoping to go to our local stores like Fred Meyer's and Costco and ask them if we could like put, I guess, boxes near the cashier, or ask the customers to round up three dollars, and like the fundings would go to where she works, and we also talked about having like an Amazon wishlist. And I'm pretty sure we talked about setting, like, sending it to the students at Kentwood and Kent Lake, so that if, like, they're going to buy something on Amazon, they could just round up like three dollars, and then the items would get shipped to the officer.
Yeah, so for the Amazon wishlist, I did one at Kent Lake for a pad and tampon drives. So you just have to follow a link. It's extremely easy and accessible. You follow a link, and whoever is creating the Amazon wishlist sets a certain amount that they want to order, and so people who are on it will can just see how much has been ordered and how much they still need. From what I've remembered, it only let us do like a max of like four at a time, but the thing is, that's not as huge of an issue. You can just go in and refresh it and reset it pretty quickly, so it's like a minor step back, but nothing that I think would be too detrimental, and so what they can do is just click on the link, click on what they want to buy and how much they want to buy, and then it'll get sent directly wherever we want it sent, because the Kent area clothing bank just moved to like the Learning Academy or whatever that's called. I forgot. Probably, but it just got moved there, and they get a frequent amount of clothing drives, like they get a surplus of clothing drives, and so it's perfect. There's no, like, not in the sense that we don't need a clothing drive because we can always use those, but it's much easier to rally for clothes because I could just go through my closet and dig out two, like, a bag of clothes easy. But what's much harder to get is the socks and underwear, and that's what we go through super quick, like really quick, because I've worked there a lot, and
And it can only be new.
Yeah, you can only get new socks and underwear, because we get, we get gross ones donated, and it's also like they deserve good new socks and underwear, and so sometimes we do get socks and underwear too, but it's stuff that is clearly they didn't put thought into it, and so yes, it's something donated, but it's it's borderline dollar store type of stuff, and so socks and underwear is definitely something that the Kent Clothing Bank could definitely use.
I think that covers it all. Questions or comments?
I think this is a great idea. I have on the Amazon wishlist. I have participated in those at Kent Lake, and it's super easy. Also the clothing bank, I mean, I want to be there as well, and yes, the socks and underwear community needed, and like we said, be someone, but it's, these are great ideas.
Yeah, it's not super difficult to implement either, because we also have the idea of working with local stores. As you already said, of just like the simple as you're buying it. Like, how do you do it with a dollar store? When you're checking out the dollar store, I don't know if you guys are dollar store shoppers, if you guys spend your time there, but when school starts, they'll ask if you want to just donate a school item, and so that's just something that we could attempt with the with the local stores, because I actually attempted to do that too when I was doing a drive for pads and tampons, and I met with the Fred Meyer guy, and it could have worked, it just was hard because I didn't have enough credibility behind it, because it was just like a small school project, but considering that this would be like the whole youth council, it'd be much easier to do that too, and worst is, they just say no. We move on.
The answer is always no until you ask.
Yeah, so we thought it'd be fun to reach out to that and see.
Quick suggestion, like, I have one without sort of, would you like to do anything, I don't know, like, I didn't grab it, so if anything was available, ready, available there.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what they do, and they take it and they go like. Dollar twenty-five.
Do you anticipate being able to have one before the end of this? Or is this something that might have to be, so, oh. Imagine if that happens.
Um, I think we talked about setting one up kind of near Thanksgiving time of next year, and then probably another one like April, May, like six months from then. Alright. Next, we have our report on LIAC, which is the Legislative Youth Advisory Council.
Action, yeah, sorry.
Action Day of LIAC, yes, yes. So we met with representatives like Claudia Kaufman and Deborah Entiman. And Chris Sterns, kind of. We met him in pass. We were able to voice Covington's concerns about public safety, number one, and then Covington Youth Council's concerns with our education and environmental concerns. We met with other youth groups, and we also learned how to write a bill, look up a bill, support bills, and then we sat in a bill hearing. The one I participated in was really cool. It was about juvenile, like juvenile felons, I guess. I don't know what the word is, but they're like fees and how to get those waived. And this sparked other projects such as our youth collab. So I have been talking with mainly a representative from San Amish Youth Board, and we have representatives from Covington, San Amish, Bellevue, Spokane, Tacoma, Auburn, Auburn, and Issaquah, who have banded together, and we're going to support bills, write bills, and then we also are thinking about setting up weekly meetings or twice a month meetings, and going to state summits and comparing and contrasting our youth boards to see what we can all improve on. Any questions?
So when you're talking about writing bills for youth concerns, which, which ones are, what ideas do you guys have?
So the one already in-house is the one about LGBTQIA plus youth learning about like sex education and getting more of those kinds of sex education into schools. And then we also, that's the one that's currently in session, but this is still in the works, so we have to come up with new ones that we want to write. And LIAC has many connections, so we're really working with, directly with Monet from LIAC, who's one of the youth representatives on LIAC, to get the ball rolling.
Would this be similar to the work that, and I'm going to get the name wrong, it's Junior Statesmen of America or something like that? Have you heard of this? Let me find the name of the organization. I will send it to Krista to send to you. I just feel like there might be some overlap and more resources and more collaboration. But maybe they don't do act, maybe it's all mock stuff and not actual, or just like the stuff that I'll kind of poke.
Awesome.
Yeah.
That's mock. Okay. In like group trials. In my, in working with.
Yeah.
Anything else? Alright. So when comparing and contrasting youth boards, I went to a Auburn Youth Council meeting, and they talked about their different committees that each of them was on. And some other youth councils are really big, so they have separate committees within their giant youth board. And then some meet two times a month. They also, most of them have Instagrams and social medias. And then a big thing that we were thinking about implementing is one council member, like during every meeting, goes and attends the youth council meeting. So they are aware of what's going on and aware of what's going on in the committees, and then report back, even though we already report back, but that's a different way they do it. And we were just thinking about implementing some of these things. Any questions, comments?
The Instagram and social media's come up several times, and just wondering what the process is, it just seems to be a recurring request, and is that something we can move forward? And any of your toll, how, how can we reach the youth and hold Instagram? Obviously TikTok and others, which. You know, I, I think we need to just talk, talk about, figure out how we make that happen, so, you know, obviously the city's going to be concerned about what gets posted, but that couldn't keep us from at least moving forward.
Yeah.
I'm looking at you.
Yeah, we're talking with Carla, and that's mainly our job. Actually, she has a lot on her plate.
There's going to be some parameters to keep the message unified, right?
Yeah, I was just going to add, when I was on Arts Commission, Carla was really great and receptive and collaborative. We would prepare the content on May. That was all. Merida, she was amazing at that, because she was in marketing, but we would prepare the content, and then Carla would put it out there, and so at least from a commission perspective, it was, it was easy.
Awesome. Anything else?
I like back at your cross poll, and getting ideas from other councils. I wonder kind of like what we do with the tri-cities, if there isn't an opportunity for a tri-city or whatever, larger needs, and to share those ideas, and that would be something that the council could probably come to as well. Get ideas on what's working in different communities, and now we can better support youth, so.
That's an awesome idea. Alright. Oh, thank you. One thing we find really important is that we want to integrate STEM opportunities in. One goal that we want to have is to integrate STEM opportunities into Covington. We want to have citywide events and hackathons where we can have more knowledge on STEM and opportunities about what the high schoolers and middle schoolers can get involved in, like career paths, and like what STEM is all about. We want to have like citywide events and hackathons in the city where high schoolers and middle schoolers can get together to be able to learn more about certain topics. We would also love to have keynotes speakers at these citywide events and hackathons to give another real-world view about how to be involved in STEM. One example that we can implement this is, we were talking about transportation and having a way to transport kids who don't have rides or can't drive, and shouldn't be, shouldn't be walking in areas where it's dangerous to, to have transportation available, and what high schoolers and middle schoolers can do is get together and develop and create an app system together for this goal that we have of the transportation van. We would also have teacher volunteers from high schoolers to implement this and help the high schoolers and the middle schoolers create the app. Any questions?
So the app would be used for students to analyze lift or, or just build order van? Is that what you're thinking?
Not really order a van, because we don't really want to put a price point on it. But it kind of like give a map system, times and routes, and I think first we'll start off like with a static app where it's mostly displaying information about what it is, and then later on, maybe like evolve or move into another function.
Put for kids to find out where there's transport.
Yeah. And this idea was sparked because of the lack of transport for kids, like, because you go all the way from Kent Lake, like, three of them here. They have an activity bus, so on Thursdays, all of their votes have to be on Thursday. You can only be in like one, maybe two clubs. Yeah, one, so.
And the bus frequently gets canceled.
Exactly. That was our thing, is like, like, they'll be, it's.
Be in third period, and they'll get announcements like the activity bus is canceled, so if you, if you ride home, is the activity bus? Then you're like, too bad, so sad, but then also with that, if we, it's one activity bus, and so you get dropped off very like very far from your house, depending upon where you live, like, and while like people do have to walk to their houses from bus stops, like that's of course expected, it's disproportionate to where they live, and so like when I took the bus, like freshman year, I'd be dropped off at like the edge of my neighborhood, which was like, okay, cool, whatever, but the thing is, you get dropped off at a completely different spot, so you're still walking more than you should have to be in specific parts of town, because not everyone lives in like a calm suburb area of Covington. Because a lot of kids from Kent Lake live like in drastic parts of Covington, like all over them. Yeah, and Kent, like they're, I know people who passed Kentwood on their way to Kent Lake. And so the activity bus is kind of unreasonable for them all the time, and so this was kind of just something to help combat some of that.
I fought the district on that, and I lost.
Oh, yeah, that, we're killing things, two hundred kids.
Yeah, that's one of the biggest parts of this, is the boundary changes. So kids who have transportation may put in a transfer request, they get accepted, now they have to find their own transportation to that new school. So it's bad. It's not a good scenario, because these kids who might need to go to this school to finish off their high school years, they might not have the opportunity, they might not have a car, they might not have all the time to ride like two hours on public transit. Yeah, which isn't always reliable, always late. There's two routes in Covington. One.
And then, yeah, also with the transportation from like Kent Lake, for example. We're getting a bunch of kids, but a lot of the kids we're getting from everything I've seen have been more low-income students, and so I feel like it's just maybe putting it to so much more disproportionate disadvantage. Because say the activity bus is canceled, then they just can't participate in club, and there's some clubs that are extremely beneficial to kids like DECA and Key Club, and interact, and these clubs that can really further their chances of like college and just general like community involvement that they just can't do because they just can't get home.
Yeah, there is no metro. Well, question, you guys had a chance to go present this to the Kent School Board, speak directly to them. Not about the boundaries, because we know this.
This is about the, the specific activity bus and what's happening.
This is a fairly new idea of ours, but that would be something that we definitely would look into.
Yeah, and one of the biggest issues is no driver. For the activity bus, that's one of the bigger issues. That there's no driver.
Yeah, because people just can't drive it.
Yeah.
And so it's kind of, it's, there's a lot more to it other than the fact that they're like, they don't care, people can't drive it. You trust me, Ryland?
I wonder if that opens the opportunity. I know there's a lot when you're working with this, but if there was a volunteer bus driver program? Like, and you have to get, you have to get trained specifically.
Your CDO and.
But if we can't staff a paid one, how could we staff?
There's a lot, people don't want, people don't want to work for the construction.
Driving a school bus.
Yeah, my mom's a school nurse.
Want to work for the kids' school.
I, well, I'm thinking of like retiring people, but my dad was a volunteer, he, he would like drive a senior bus to the senior center. As a volunteer, he would have that skill set, and he didn't want to work full-time, but he would pop in once a year. I don't know.
This, the activity bus came up in our most recent meeting with the school. We had a meeting session with them after all the things, and I don't believe there are more activities in the weekend for kids, especially Covington, so they don't have to leave their country elsewhere. The activity bus, and so, who, what was the new? Maria, is that what it was, the new, Michelle, the new commissioner, mention that's a. Michelle, that's a head of project at Bird, so I would get in contact with her soon and just say, okay, we, we have similar concerns of the lack of the hidden glasses impacting all students with disproportionate impacts, these, that, a lot of disadvantage, so they should be open to that. I like the idea of the app, at least making students aware of what options there are. We can definitely look at that and possibly expand that in the future, so.
And speaking about the joint meeting in the council, this, this is the school board, Christina just mentioned this, it would be really good to hear your opinion. hear your opinions on this, because a lot of these issues, talk, talk tonight are school district issues. This will give, if we, we have this meeting before, at least get your ideas for the council meeting, the school board, we can share them.
Okay, absolutely. Yeah, I was gonna say, if you have a chair, then, um, yeah.
Well, they have that opportunity to go to the school board, they can do that. This is our true, the council, the city council, but, um, and that's another thing of this new council, it's a process. Strength in number.
Awesome. Alright, next thing is repainting our city van.
You, you don't like the pure whiteness of the van on.
Oh, the pure chipping whiteness.
He's got the vibe is.
As the mystery machine. So this was, we talked to Mayor Wagner about this, but in a very rush scenario in setting, but we were thinking about repainting it because the paint is chipping, so might as well do it fun. It's less intimidating to kids than a big white van driving around. It also has that viral factor that Mayor Wagner was talking about, and like worms hanging off of buildings, so this would be our viral factor. It's the same colors as our Covington logo. And we could also use it for citywide promotion, like bringing it to Chuck or Treats, having it in our parades or events, being interactive. And my father owns an auto body. We could paint it or wrap it, you know?
So, question. I didn't realize that we had a city bus, so. Okay.
Who writes it? Uh, with Maya and Jackie.
Okay.
Every department too.
Okay, but the youth are using it.
With the youth council, they use, they use the two.
Yeah, okay, okay. Like three times. And we could, and like, we also did have like change like the Covington machine.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that whatever we do, Warner Brothers who has very deep pockets.
About that one, so then we were, we said we could do like, like spell everything a little bit wrong.
That would drive, that would drive a certain person sitting next to you a little crazy if she saw misspelled words.
Flowers a little bit to the left, a little bit different of a green.
That's a great idea, love it.
Are you guys got a budget for it, or approve it, Sam?
Yeah. Next, again Instagram. So, up there in the little little corners, our idea for a C Y C logo, it's basically the Covington one, but just, you know, tweaked a little. And we would have this presented on like updated flyers, presented at the volunteer fair. We just really need more C Y C promotion because we have three, four members. And only three of us would be left on the council after that. So, we really need to promote it more. I know a lot of people at Kentwood are interested in being on it. The only problem is like following through on the process and getting applications in. And a lot of people don't want to do like the free, free letters of recommendation? Yeah, so. Not saying that we need to lower it, but it is turning away a lot of their, yeah.
But if you want to make that recommendation, that's fine, if it's, if you consider it as an obstacle or impediment to getting more youth council members, like we can reduce it.
Yeah.
Let us say those words, we, and we.
It's just, a lot of people, this is like establishing their connection, because they want to be more involved because they might not already have them though. And like, if you have free letters of recommendation, that might be your job, or like your club advisor and a teacher, and that means you already have a lot on your plate. So, maybe if we lowered it, it would get more people to sign up. And then also posters around schools, we really need to get people more involved. And I don't know what the Kent Lake situation is looking like, is anyone interested, Ryland?
Here's what I do, I go, hey, you should join the youth council, you love it, and they go. And that's basically how my conversations go, so.
Yeah.
Okay, when I thi- when I think about it more, I feel like there's kind of an image on the youth council that it's really boring. Because it's just for, because in their defense, it has the word council in it. And most sixteen year olds I know aren't like, I would, I'm dreaming to be a part of the council, like they wake up and they're like, when's the next council I can join? And so, not saying change the name or anything, because that's absurd, but like, just increasing the, the image or just changing the image of it, but I think that could just be, that doesn't have to be a hard fix of just that could be through like posters and stuff like that of not being as like, come to meetings and.
Promotional videos.
Be a meeting.
Have you guys thought about talking with Mr. Fowler about having the leadership class, uh, make some posters for you guys?
Yeah, we, it's hard to get in touch with the leadership, but we've already talked to Cass and the other people, because.
So, I, you should probably know this, but I'm doing my act become student meter hours. And I'm do, I'm now doing it with Mr. Fowler, so let me know what you want, I'll talk to him.
Um, and I, you, the name is another hurdle, where you're easy places, where there's another, you know.
I feel like the C Y C is like.
Mystery machine, you know, Covington Mystery Club or whatever, I mean. Yeah, Blue Crew, yeah, yeah, I mean, whatever.
The council part is fine, it's just the image behind the idea. Oh, yeah. It, it's sometimes, sometimes it's kind of hard to market to teenagers, because they do kind of everything all the time. I know I'm part of that, so I, I, it's, if it's, I have, it's kind of hard when we prepare stuff for advertising, because we're all like, we could say this, and we're like, no, that is, and just. And so you just kind of, it's hard to keep it approachable, but I feel like with just a little bit of like image reshaping, it wouldn't be absurd to do.
There's anything myself or any of the council members could come out to school without scaring anybody. But I have no problem coming out, speaking as well as any of us, if it would help.
I'm assembly just for us. Oh, actually, we could tell them to say, hey.
Of course, my daughter will be going there next year, so she probably wouldn't want to see you there, but that's fine.
Friendly amendment to Jeff's suggestion, if there are other voices as well.
Yeah.
Jeff, you would better connect with students, not saying Jeff doesn't, but I could see the council coming too, and, you know, it's, yeah.
Confirming the not pull factor.
Yes, exactly. So, if there are other voices that you think would better connect, that we can reach out to, to have them. I mean, we've had some incredible, uh, athletes come out of Covington schools that maybe we can reach out to, talk to them. I mean, there's the people in industry, I don't know what our connection are, but council can definitely make call calls to some of these people and say, you know, if nothing else, would you be willing to make a video for us? So, something, we're willing to think outside the box. And obviously, we'd be willing to do it, but if there are other people that would better connect, you know, see if we can make that connection too.
Um, do y'all do pep rallies, or I don't even have a thing anymore? Two, yeah, um, sadly, the Kent Lake pep assemblies, you kind of go and be like, what's gonna happen? It's kind of the vibe of it, you like show up and you're like, okay, what are they gonna, what are they gonna pull here? So. I don't know, I don't know, but it's most approachable from everything I've seen to be simple. And the flashier you make it, the more embarrassing it is. The more embarrassing it is, the flashier you make it. I, I really liked how Katie's been advertising. From what I've seen, a lot of social media and a lot of, um, word of mouth, like grassroots type of, um, advertising, and I feel like that'll be really effective. We take that to more Kent Lake.
We really need underclassing, so if we advertise maybe even, what's the age, fifteen to eighteen?
Yeah.
Not middle schools, but.
Remind, remind me, the, the letters of recommendation, don't, they don't need to be by somebody eighteen or older, right? So here you count, or you write a letter of recommendation to one of your fellows.
I think it is, I can.
Is it?
I have to look through the last.
Okay, okay. But you can recommend someone, I recommend. Seen, I think you really like her, I don't know.
Feel a little embarrassed.
But we also have some, uh, alumnis from Kentwood and Kent Lake that are Green River students now, that got scholarships because they, um, I think a couple of them were on youth council, uh, the Rotary gave them, uh, scholarships. And so they're close enough in your age, um, a lot closer than I am. And they, and they've got that recent memory of what it was like being in school, but they may be able to help as well. And talking about that we've got some, got some, um, pretty, a, a nice group of alumnis.
My sister's an alumni, she was on the youth council, um, I know Jackie talked about someone coming to work here for an internship. We could have her talk and maybe make a video or something, maybe not talk at a pep assembly, but. No. Yeah, it is. Anything else? Alright. Uh, do you want to talk about the issue? This was in December, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so back in December, um, a few of us from the youth council went to Bellevue to have a Covington Youth Council Retreat. Over there, we talked about the, um, what we've done in the past in the youth council and what more we can do, add on to it. Um, we got to bond with each other, which is really fun. And we, we created goals and we reflected on, okay, so we did lots of volunteering throughout of being on the council, but we wanted to do more than that and leave more of a mark. Um, so we had more, I, so we generated more ideas on what we can do throughout the year, which we did talk about in this meeting, and, yeah. Questions or comments? Uh, overnight.
Alright. This part, we were really excited about, it was a really big goal of ours to collect, to do something with art, because we know that a lot of Kent Lake has a lot of, our Kent Lake, Covington as a whole, has a lot of talent for art, and so what we did was use programs that we already had here, so like using our resources, old stuff, and working with the local elementary schools and a little bit of middle schools to, to collect a bunch of art. We got over six hundred pieces of art, and then we displayed them across ten Covington locations, which we got so much art, we were sorting through it and the piles didn't end. They didn't end at all, but we were actually really happy with it though, because personally, when I was hanging it up, everyone was just stopping and really admiring it, I hadn't, so the top left one is the library, and the other two are at the animal hospital by Chick-fil-A, and those ones, i- it was pretty fun hanging them up, because everyone's like, oh my gosh, I remember the guys that did this, and when I was at the library, at least, there was a bunch of kids that were just stopping and looking at it, and so this was something we really wanted to do, was just increase the total involvement, and a lot of the local Covington locations were really eager about it too. I know Multi Care, how many pieces did Multi Care get in shelters? Yeah, a hundred forty-five pieces just at Multi Care. And so it was extremely successful, so we're super excited about that. Next slide.
Um, I'm actually gonna give this, I do have to read. Add on to the positive reinforcement that we got, while me and like the team, we were hanging up at Multi Care, there was this police officer and he came in, and we were like halfway done, and he was like, oh my gosh, this is beautiful, this like lights up the whole so much. And we were like, thank you so much, it's nice to know that it's actually like making things seem more interesting.
It really did light up the, especially the vet, at least, when I walked in there. I just saw a bunch of little kitty, and I just saw a bunch of little kitties, and I hung all those up, so it, me personally, I still had fun hanging them up, regardless of how many pieces there was. And so, to do this, we, um, we contacted all the schools, and that was mainly through a lot of Jackie's work, because she just, it was much easier for her to email them and contact them. And then we collected all the art and we sorted them, and so to do that, we counted all them, ensured they were all there, and then we labeled them and assigned them all numbers, just so they were super easy to get, keep track of them, because we don't want any kid to lose their art, because we do have to get it back to them. And then we all separated and displayed them, and now, starting the first to the fifth of April, we're gonna start taking it down, because it's just for the month of August. So then we're, we're, we're gonna take it down, recount it, re-source it, and distribute it back, but that'll be much easier than what we already did. And so, what we originally were wanting to do was an art show at Kent Lake, where we hang, where we hung up a bunch of trifold, like those really tall trifold like things, or two, I can't think of the word right now. But we're gonna hang up a bunch of those all for high schoolers, because we noticed a lot of stuff in the community that's directed towards elementary schoolers and younger kids, which is great, and we love that, but the thing is, it's hard, it's not as much for high schoolers, that's something that they genuinely are interested in. There's movie nights and that stuff that they're interested in, but it's frequently feels to be directed towards younger kids. And so we really wanted to do an art show just at Kent Lake, and we could work with the, like Kent Lake and Kentwood and the local art teachers and ceramic teachers. We were thinking about ceramics, that was a little bit hard one though, because displaying that, but that's something we would have looked into a little bit deeper, more planned on, but this was, it was pretty difficult to fully execute, because when I started looking into it, you have to file a whole building use form, and then you have to coordinate with the teachers, and then we also wanted to do something bigger with it, like make it a full event. And so it was a little bit for, it was a little bit too much for us to take on for our first time, and so we kind of stuck with the art show across the community, because then we also thought we could do an art show where you can see all of it at Kent Lake, and then it's gonna be then distributed across the community. We had a bunch of different avenues that we could have gone with, and so next year, we hope to expand it, so either doing this art show night, or just increasing the involvement to local high schoolers. Or if, whether they do this night or not, I think it, we think it'd be really cool to get more high schoolers involved, because we did get some of the middle schools involved, but we had a very few of that, and so just expanding the range of all of this, and we had a huge turnout, and there was a bunch of teachers that were emailing Jackie, and they were saying that they were really interested in this, but they just couldn't get it to fix this year. But next year, they're totally gonna be involved in this, and then we also wanted to expand more to the middle schools, like Cedar Heights, and then begin to reach out to the high schools, just to make it even bigger, because we feel like it'll just be much easier now to do that, once we already understand just generally how this works. Any questions on this one?
Okay, so, as some of you might know, I was brought on as a full, or a part-time paid employee at Storehouse Food Bank in December. So since then, I've overseen warehouse operations, volunteer coordination, and backpack buddies, and it's like. So in January of twenty twenty-three, we switched from a drive-up mall where we gave clients our bo- boxes of food and went to a shopping mall, which we did before COVID. So that has been a positive, they did a, come shop and choose what food they would like, so we're not forcing, reducing food waste and all that. So over the last three months, as you can see in the graph, we have had a major increase in clients. In the orange, you can see that's our DoorDash people, so we are now at fifty-three DoorDashes this week. And then in blue, we have our shopping clients, which is about two hundred thirty-two. This is all changed. We are now, at March, to date is now near three hundred clients, which is a lot for us. This past Monday, we did a record eighty-eight clients, and instead of doing a two-hour distribution, we had to extend it to a three-hour distribution just to serve the clients that were in the parking lot at five forty-five. Our volunteers have been playing ten-hour days for some days, and it's getting tiring. We have had a record amount of food not donated, so we have had ten thousand less pounds in the month of March compared to last time. And this is overall effect of all the food banks, everyone's experiencing the same thing. Queen Maple Valley Food Bank, which has strange restrictions on food, they are limiting how much food they are going to give out, because they do not have the amount of food. Unli- unlike Maple Valley, Storehouse has not purchased much food, other than Backpack Buddies. All of our food is through donations, Maple Valley does purchase theirs, and they can't even get enough food. So we are going to be struggling in these next few weeks, however, we do have a bunch of food drives coming up in May, June, I believe some in April. We have partnerships with Dollar Tree to run personal hygiene drives every month now at the beginning. We also have the post office food drive, which some of you have helped out in the past with. We also have a food drive coming up in May at Safeway to raise some food. To hopefully replenish our stock, but as of now, probably for the next week, I'll have to cut restrict, or put in restrictions on the amount of food that people can take. Because our entire storage container, which is forty feet long, is now empty, and we are completely out. And then for comparison, I'll go back. So for comparison, you don't see this in the graph, but before January, we had DoorDash, and most of our clients were drive-up, and they came and got a box. And then we tried to switch more to DoorDash, so we have split our operations, we have less people coming in. So now we're up to fifty-two, well fifty-three now, but in December, we were only at twenty-eight DoorDashes. But now we're up to fifty-three, and then coming up, let's see. So we also do the Backpack Buddies, as you can see in the graph, at the beginning of the year, we were at one hundred fifty-five. And now this week, we packed a record two hundred twenty-three. All the schools pretty much every week have been asking for more and more bags, Kent Lake just increased theirs last week from eighteen to twenty-nine, which is a record. And it keeps going up, we are expecting another record amount next week going into spring break. This is Storehouse's main project that we do, as far as purchasing stuff, this is. We only purchase for Backpack Buddies right now, which sucks up all the money for operations, so basically, it all goes to Backpack Buddies mostly. Which right now, it was priced at six dollars and fifty cents, it's well over seven dollars a bag now with inflation and everything. So we're, Covington Rotary reimburses us for half of it. But even then, Backpack Buddies, we're purchasing almost weekly from Costco and Fred Meyer. And we've been purchasing about one thousand pounds a week of food. Any questions? So we have a food drive at Safeway from ten to four P M. And then we also have a personal hygiene drive at Dollar Tree that same day, and we're working on a Fred Meyer food drive as well. Oh, Macy's. Yes, since we are closed that day.
And Ryland, just so you know, um, after council meetings, we all get to talk about something, and I try to keep everyone updated. We kind of knew these numbers were on the rise because of the, the drop in the SNAP benefits by the state. Um, but just as important for the food is the, the need for volunteers, so. You'll, you'll be seeing a little bit more advertising coming out um of the Storehouse social media for volunteers. Yeah, Backpack Buddy is a, a big project uh shared with the Rotary. And we'll talk to, when we get to all say our little thing at the end, I'll talk again, or better I will, about um the Rotary's big annual event coming up on April twenty. Nine, and that is to benefit the Backpack Buddy program, so like.
Perfect, that was all we had prepared, it, we weren't happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? All I can say is, wow, you, everybody on the household.
You're gonna have what Mason's gonna tell you.
The uh, I, I'm just impressed with everything that you've shown us tonight, and I know. I see you everywhere, doing things, and you represent Covington extremely well. Kentwood, Kent Lake, wherever you're at, and. We as a council greatly appreciate it, we as a city appreciate everything we do. If there's anything we can do, I know I've taken notes on some of the things tonight that you brought up, you know, Sean and the other council members have it. But don't hesitate to reach out to us if there's anything we can do, and I've let Debbie know, and. Let me know if there's anything I can do for the Storehouse, I'm always there to. Even if it's standing on the street corner when we do a drive-up food drive, I have to. Bring in some more food, with SNAP benefits going away, and so. Some, some people are eighty percent re- reduction in SNAP benefits, but not a hundred percent. Alright, well, thank you all very much, any other questions or comments?
I just have one, when it comes to recruitment, if you guys want to get us, council members here, some material to hand out to, because. We're always going around places that we can hand it to friends who may have a kid who we want interested, or. Give it to local pastors who have in the area, or to other youth organizations in the area, we can hand these things out, guys. Ryan, you're the inspiration of that one, um, but we can get, just see where we can hand these out to in different areas. If you guys have anything for us to help with recruitment, we'll gladly get out there and pass it out for you guys.
Thanks, Joe. Alright, with that, uh, this second session joint meeting is over, thank you all very much, good job, greatly appreciate it.